Well, I said the first three. I stopped there.
All right, let's go ahead and get started on this work session this evening. First item is going to be to accept or modify the agenda. Is there a motion? I move the agenda be approved as presented. Is there a second? This has been any discussion? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Yep. Great. Next up is the consent agenda. Their motion.
I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Any discussion on the consent agenda? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Great. Tonight, we do have some action items on our work session agenda that does allow for community participation. And what we'll do is with each of the items, we'll have those explained. I'll call up if there's anybody that would like to make public comments on that individual item, and then we'll move on to the next one from there. So I'll read this. It is the duty of the chairperson of the school board with assistance from the county sheriff as necessary to conduct the meeting in an orderly manner and to limit discussion to topics relevant to the issue before the board for consideration. Persons addressing the school board are advised to limit their remarks to those relevant to the pending items. No persons in attendance shall be allowed to voice remarks except as recognized by the chairperson or the clerk of the board after audibly stating their name and whom they represent if applicable. No person shall bring into the boardroom any sign, banner, or other such item which would interfere with other members of the public in seeing, hearing, or otherwise participating in the meeting, provided that models, photos, maps, charts, drawings, and other such demonstrative materials intended for use in a presentation by a specific person shall be permitted. Upon recognition by the chair or the clerk of the board, the speaker shall address the school board chair, confine their comments to issues of public concern relating to the operation of Warren County Public Schools, refrain from words or statements which, from their usual construction and common acceptance, are defamatory to specific individuals or tend to violence or breach of the peace, refrain from obscenity and vulgarity, stay within allotted time, stop speaking when directed by the chairperson. Groups or individuals in the audience creating an atmosphere detrimental to or disturbing the orderly conduct of the meeting will be asked to refrain from such conduct once. Any additional disturbance after the warning will not be tolerated, and the chairperson will ask the county sheriff to remove the individual group or clear the boardroom so that the board can conduct the business of the school division. When recognized, please state your name for the record, whether you are a county resident, parent of a Warren County Public School student, or an employee of the school division, and limit your comments to three minutes. The first item that we have is a request from the board of, for the Board of Supervisors to issue a purchase order for seven replacement buses, and that's Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Warren County Board of Supervisors previously established a school bus replacement fund of $1 million for the school board in FY 2020, operating budgets, from the operating budget surplus. The county agreed to reserve these funds until such time as the school division was ready to purchase the buses. Because the buses will be ordered in the current fiscal year and likely will not be delivered until the next fiscal year, probably early 2023, the county has agreed to issue the purchase order for the buses on behalf of the school system. Upon delivery, the buses will be titled to Warren County Public Schools. The school board approval is being requested to authorize the superintendent to request that the county issue a purchase order on behalf of Warren County Public Schools for seven buses at a total cost of $903,693 from Sonny Merriman Incorporated. Those are 77 passenger buses, and I believe one of them is a wheelchair accessible bus. You can see that the cost there per bus is around $127,509, and the bus that will have the wheelchair accessibility is $138,693. You know, we did try to get that grant early on that was submitted back in, I'm going to say September, October. It went through the process. We didn't get the, we did not get the grant. We were not funded that, so that was kind of why we were holding off. We did find out about a month and a half ago, or a couple months, that we did not get that. So then when we started looking at, as far as placing our order, we were informed that it would probably be around January of '23 before the buses actually were brought. So for us, that poses a problem. So for us to issue the purchase warrant this fiscal year, then our end date is June 30th, so then we would have to go into the next fiscal year when the purchase would actually occur. So in communication with Dr. Daley, he said just authorize the purchase, and to get that, and the county would go ahead and issue the purchase order so that they could carry it over from one year to the next.
Is there anyone out here today that wants to speak on this? And Mr. Valentine, did you have any letters?
No, I had to.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Ballinger from the board?
When I was talking with Mr. Mitchell, he was saying on the wheelchair accessible that having buses come in with that would help make the routes a little smoother, then have to send the bus all the way down somewhere. So I guess that's, I believe, I believe he said he wanted several of the buses with the wheelchair ramp, so is that, is that off the table now?
Well, for this order, you know, we need to get those buses replaced. We have a number of buses that need to be replaced, but you will see that in future orders, we'll increase the number of wheelchair accessible buses.
Okay.
And on those, the seats are able to be put in or pulled out depending upon, so you can utilize them as a conventional route or for special education transportation. So they're, it benefits us in that way as well. And there are 77 passenger buses, therefore, you know, you have, you're able to add more stops to that route than our current special education routes.
Thank you.
And you'll apply again for grants, those same grants in the future?
Yes, ma'am. We will continue to apply for all of the grants that comes to us. We did receive something, we looked into it, but it was for electric buses, and they do not go very well up in the mountains. So, you know, so, and plus, you don't have the infrastructure within the system to support that. So, so right now, but yes, any grants as far as for transportation, we will be putting those together and submitting those.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Ballinger?
How many buses do we have? How many buses do we currently have?
I want to believe it's 50.
It's low 50s. I don't have the exact numbers in the business.
So are we retiring some of those buses? I know when we were doing the grant, they were going to make us do like the cash for clunkers where we destroy the old bus, but now we don't have to do that. So can we sell the old buses, or?
So yes, they will be surplus. So once we get the new buses in, then we'll bring that to the board to surplus those buses, and then that, they will be auctioned off.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I move that the superintendent be authorized to request that the county of Warren issue a purchase order on behalf of Warren County Public Schools for seven school buses at a total cost of $903,693.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Any additional discussions? All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Great, thank you. Next up is going to be the second reading of the February 2022 VSBA policies, and that's Mr. Smith.
Good evening. In February 2022, the VSBA submitted 29 policies for consideration by the Warren County School Board. A chart showing the updated policies has been prepared by staff noting the proposed changes. An additional three policies are presented for review but have no recommend revisions. We would also like to recommend in addition to policy JGF, search and seizure, as this is a second reading of the proposed changes. Final approval of the changes is scheduled for May 4th, 2022. Just in some of the policies themselves, I think in the past during this presentation, it sort of pointed out anything that would be a change in the way we operate business or just a new policy in general. In the last board meeting we had, I recognized two policies that were, well, one was not necessarily different, but it was an explanation, a clarification that Mr. Hirsch gave in regards to restraint and seclusion of students to note, we do not use seclusion for our students. So that policy allows us to remove seclusion throughout the entire policy itself, and that's policy JM. Another policy that's brand new that will have an impact because it's new, and that was the policy that dealt, that's JJAF. JJAF is student-athlete sudden cardiac arrest. And that policy, a lot of these policies that come out, such as this, and such as years ago, I compared it to the concussion protocol, the concussion management protocol. A lot of these things obviously come out from our experiences with just in society itself and with concussion in some of our contact-type sports, and also that we know that through our programs, our sports programs, students need to have clearance through medical physicals and those type of things through a physician. And that we also know, and we hear and see those type of things, that even through that process, sometimes certain things may not be quite early in those type of things, and one is dealing with the heart. So in our concussion management program, our parents and our student-athletes and coaches and so forth, they're all given and exposed through different type of avenues. We have, we have literature on concussion manage, concussion protocol. We also have like web-based instruction and those type of things. A lot of that's driven by the Virginia High School League, and I'm sure that the Virginia High School League will probably provide some type of guidance and those type of things they always do as it relates to our student-athletes. So here, we're, we need to create and review on an annual basis information to be able to recognize those signs and symptoms and those type of things which could lead to sudden cardiac arrest. And so we will do that most likely through a committee that we would have as we did with the concussion management. And then each year, we would look at reviewing those policy, or the policy, yes, but also the materials of which that we provide to parents, whether it be for like meet the team nights and those type of things. So that is, that is the awareness there. That's one that's totally new. There was a policy that most likely is not in your packet that we, as a board, did not, we did not bring that forward as staff early on because it was very questionable whether it would actually be put into practice, and that is the policy that at one time, that with vaccinations, I think the start of the first of the year with vaccinations, that people had to have vaccinations and those type of things, but that was in the court system. It was, it was reversed. And so our guidance from VSBA at that time was just to wait and see, which we did. So that was a policy that was not put in our manual that actually through the February policies that were put out, it was, it was struck out. So what questions are, and I have staff, we have staff here who worked on these particular policies for reference if you have questions. Most of the policies and so forth are just the, maybe a legal reference, or maybe a cross-reference to another policy. As policies are removed, then those cross-references are either, are struck as well, and as policies, just as the new policy on student-athlete sudden cardiac arrest, that most likely will have a cross-reference somewhere inside the policies. And this is a second, I'm sorry, this is the second reading. We normally go through either two or three readings before we do approvals.
On the vaccinations you just mentioned, is that the COVID-related vaccinations?
Yeah.
Not the childhood vaccinations?
That was, yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, that was the, that was the policies that were brought forth that basically identified that, that they're going to require you to have vaccinations for COVID and those type of things. And that was one where the VSBA said just, maybe just hold on this because it obviously is going to be a courtroom battle.
Any other questions from the board for Mr. Smith?
And if you have questions, like after this, just email, you can email myself, or you could look at the list, either or, of who reviewed that particular policy and those type of things, but I'm more than happy if you send that to myself if you have questions to help answer it. These in particular aren't policies this time. They're very, they're very few. There's changes, but it's not dramatic.
I notice they changed, they removed the word "shall" many times, which doesn't that just weaken the legal term of the, like a lot of these policies where they're changing, it's just instead of saying "shall do this," it just kind of leaves it very open. So I had asked an attorney about that, and they just said, well, it just kind of opens the door for choice.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things that the VSBA, they said that they really want school boards to have local choice, and so by removing "shall," then it gives the board an opportunity to make an adjustment to a policy as they see fit for their, for their school and for their community. Because they are pro-local decision-making when it comes to school boards.
And we, as far as the policies themselves, even though they're submitted to us by VSBA and those type of things, we have the flexibility to be able to change certain, you know, certain type of things. We obviously wouldn't necessarily want to go totally against that particular policy itself, but perhaps as Sylons had mentioned, there could be some terminology that we see in there that perhaps the change we do not agree with.
Well, it's better than well.
And then I was looking at the policy on policy, the VFC, the policy adoption one. I was looking at the red line area where it's changing from policies "shall be developed and presented to the board" to policies "may be developed and presented to the board." So I guess I was a little unclear on that. So does that mean that policy can be developed without us now if this changes?
All policies have to be approved by the board.
Well, that's what the current policy on making policy says, that they're changing it. The wording from "policy shall be developed and presented to the board" to "policy may be developed and presented to the board." So it says maybe it presents the board, and then it crosses out. I can't read exactly what's crossed out, but.
I think it says B as in boy, F.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah, B as in boy. It's on page 14 of the Redline document. And it says it's adding in "by the superintendent or the superintendent's designee." So it's saying that policies may be developed and presented to the board. I'm having a hard time reading what's crossed out underneath it, though.
So it did say "policy shall be developed and presented to the board," evidencing the consideration.
And that is one, as a board, if we would like to stay with "shall." I mean, that's, it's my understanding that all, really all policies that go in are approved by the board, but that change, once again, that, that strike can be unstruck, and.
I just wanted to understand more about that.
Well, the very first sentence, or the very second sentence is "the power to enact policy cannot be delegated to an employee or agent such as the superintendent or a single member of the school board." So it's still.
Still with the school board?
Mm-hmm.
But it, but it.
I guess I don't understand exactly what's changed. Some of these feel like they're just changing words just to change words, but I just wanted to make sure that that one was, in fact, not changing anything significant. So maybe we can just mark that one and discuss that a little bit later on. If possible, please. Just I don't understand. And then question on next one. With the in-service activities, the BHB, it's page 16 on the Redline copy. It talks about like our additional training and whatnot.
What is the one that should be, the comfy letters?
BHB.
BHB, B as in boy, H as in Harry, B as in boy.
The one right after that.
Yeah, it's right below. It had crossed out like funds shall be budgeted annually to support this program somewhere. I have a mind it's here that it's removing VSBA and NSBA from there. It's so hard to read this underneath the crossouts.
Yeah, they got rid of a lot on that one.
Yeah.
That's a total policy rewrite.
They reverted.
Yeah, that's just a total policy rewrite, and that's for, of course, for board member in-service activities for your training.
I think they are the two that they're identifying are the FOIA and the Conflict of Interest Act.
But is it, so my question that I had written on here was, is it removing us being funded to attend these additional trainings or not? Because it, it has that cross-out with the funds shall be budgeted annually, and that's crossed out, but it's not really added back in later, so.
But this.
And school board members are, all your training and expenses are covered when it comes to that.
Even once this policy's changed to cross that out?
That wouldn't change anything as far as when it comes to your training and the trainings that you guys want to attend or anything of that nature for the reimbursements when you, you know, if you went to a training and you paid for it, you know, that's, that stays in place.
And two, as a board, that can be added to that.
Yeah, we could keep that paragraph if we wanted to.
There's just that separate funds paragraph there.
Yeah. I mean, I understand the question, is it now, you know, saying that, okay, they're going to have anything?
Right, right. They'll tell us we have to do this training, but no, we're not going to pay for it.
So really, it's just that one paragraph that we can remove the strike through?
Starts with funds and ends with activities.
Yeah, maybe move it down, like until it's not the first paragraph.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it would be a bad thing to keep in if we decided we wanted to keep that paragraph in about funding. I don't think it would, that's fine.
Mr. Smith is taking answers, right?
Oh, yeah. I'm good. It'll be added back into the one on the May 4th, I believe it is. And I'm also changing on BFC, the policy adoption, where it says "may," I'm keeping in "shall."
It was on page 14?
Yeah, that was the other one.
Yeah, that's just, yeah, for you guys, yeah, just too, too bad.
Okay. And then the last one I had was the IGVA. I'm trying to find it on that.
I don't know about that one, Mr. Smith, if we want to change that made to "shall" because they also changed the second part of the sentence, and so I'm concerned that that would make it look like only the superintendent or their designee could develop and present policies to the board.
Yeah, you say "shall" then.
I think they changed it to "may" so that that wouldn't be the only way that we could get policies, you know what I mean? I mean, or is that the only way we want to get policies from the superintendent? I don't know. But I think that would be a material change if we just switched to the "shall," since they changed the second part of the sentence.
I'm fine with the way that that's, the way they have it. I think they just took out words that weren't necessary with the evidencing, the consideration.
So there, and one of the things, one of the ways that I read this is that as a board, you may decide that you want a policy for something, or you may decide you don't need a policy for that. And if you read this, leave the "shall" in there, then if there's something that's saying you shall have a policy for that, and I think that goes again back to that, that local decision-making for you as a board as a whole.
Maybe we can just play with those words and clean it up. It's just, I get what you're saying, and I like the flexibility. I just want to make sure.
You said there was an "I"?
Oh, that, yeah, this, and this one's like an easy one. The IGVA, it's the programs for students with disability. It changes all of the, where their parents is in plural to parent, that's in singular. And so my question was, does that mean that if one parent wants certain services for their child and the other parent doesn't, that one parent can make that decision without consulting the other parent, even if they're equally viewed as custodians?
Honestly, I don't, I don't believe so. I think that's more, I think that's more in for a child who just may have just one parent. Or, Mr. Hirsch can probably speak.
They had the S in parentheses before, so it seemed like that was a either-or kind of a thing.
Sure.
When they had it that way, but now that we're switching it just to parent. I just know sometimes parents do disagree as to which way to go, and I didn't know if one parent was going to be in over I than the other parent, or how.
I don't think we could.
Let's just handle that.
I don't think we can like bridge the right of a parent on the child's IEP based on how we write our policy, you know what I mean? Like that authority comes from above us. I don't think we have the power to do that, to take away up there. Like, I mean, I don't think this could take away the other parent's input because I don't think we have the power to do that, you know what I'm saying?
Would you like for me to get clarification from VSBA in regards to S versus not an S?
Do you see why they did it?
Oh, it's, it's no problem. She's a nice lady, speak.
Thank you.
No, no, I couldn't hear it really well.
Okay.
That's it.
Does anybody else have any questions for Mr. Smith on this? Mr. Valentine, did you get any letters about this?
I did not.
Is there anyone here attending that would like to speak on our second reading of these policy changes? And third thing is going to be the first reading of the VSBA revised policy GCL, professional staff development to reflect the statutory requirement, and that's Mr. Smith again.
Thank you.
Okay, this policy actually, you get a little bit of history here. In May of 2021, this actual particular policy was already revised, and we approved the revision of that policy prior to May 2021. that policy prior to May 2021 with the changes that's currently in our policy. Then in July of 2021, this policy came out that included a statutory requirement for those holding a teaching license. Recently, we received a memo that basically identified updated information on implementation of new licensure requirements. So your license currently for a new license or a license that's being renewed from a couple of years forward now is a ten-year license, where before it was a five-year license. And during that time, the General Assembly and so forth will pass multiple different type of competencies, those type of things, that through the process is identified as a need or identified as a desire for teachers who will hold a license to have certain competencies beyond just the regular, their regular studies and so forth. Examples of that would be, we as a license holder, we have to do a dyslexia awareness module to make sure that we are aware of the sign symptoms and also how to work lessons and so forth for students with dyslexia. It's an awareness. We also have ADD, first aid module that Mr. Goodwin in his office implements. It's a hands-on CPR. It's not certification. It is merely training. There's also child abuse and neglect training that goes with the Department of Social Services. So every time that someone gets a license renewal or they apply for a new license, they they complete these tasks. And these tasks are sent out by the Virginia Department of Education in the form of like modules that you do. A module that they haven't developed yet. So I don't really have so much of a definition of what I'm presenting here tonight, other than the fact that the superintendent's memo that came out from the public education just made sure that we had in our policy GCL, which basically deals with professional development. And it identifies one of the statutory requirements to renew your license or to get an initial license is a cultural competency training that the state said that they will send out in a module form for us. So we don't have that module yet. No one has that particular module yet. It's it's being developed. Perhaps they're saying that these things, that our teachers have to have this training every two years as part of the module, but we just have to give them, we don't have the module. And so it just is added to our policy of professional development because it is a requirement of the state in order to get your license or renew your license, just as I mentioned of the dyslexia awareness, child abuse and neglect and those type of things. A couple other statutory requirements, or at least one other statutory requirement that's very similar to this of getting the license is if you hold a license in social studies or social sciences, or if your if your license itself is like first through seventh, some of our older license endorsements and those type of things, today it's more like K through five. There are licenses that are like four through eight, first through seven, those type of things, that there are certain particular license endorsements that if you have those, that you have to take a module in Virginia Studies, Virginia History. And that has probably been in place for roughly the last five or six years at least. So this is just, our teachers have to have it regardless, but it was through the super's memo that it's supposed to take effect this year for our teachers. So since that would be part of their professional development that they would do through DOE, they've asked that we add that to our policy of professional development. And if I, as soon as they come out with the module and those type of things, if, I mean, more than happy to be able to be DOE website, more than happy to provide you with that link, more than happy to do it. I'm looking forward to it myself, but I just, I don't have it yet.
Any questions for Mr. Smith on this?
Would this just be enacted as people are renewing their license? Because obviously everybody's on a different, you know, schedule to renew their license. So it wouldn't happen, would it wouldn't happen to be something, wouldn't have to be something that everybody has to do this coming year. It would just be as they are renewing their license again? Or do they have to go back and, you know, like, let's say if you just renewed your license last year or the year before for that ten-year cycle, you're covered. Do you have to still go back and do this in addition now?
It would be when your license is coming up due, that's when you would have to meet that requirement. But that requirement would show that you would have to have the training every two years. So let's say that my license, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Smith, you're right. If my license were, I just, let's say I just renewed last year. So I have a ten-year, I would have a ten-year license. So really, this, to hand to, to have this to renew my license, I've got to hand this in and that that end of that ten-year period of time. But this requirement is stating that you have to complete the module every two years. So perhaps, and maybe you can help me out here, Mr. Goodwin, that perhaps we're going to have to show some type of verification or some type of certificate that would come through the module program that would identify that you had that training every two years. But you would not necessarily, once your license is issued, then your license is issued because it's, your license was issued under the standards of which the code held at that time.
That's correct. And another thing about the superintendent's email says here that we need to adopt this, but also in the end that the, to meet this requirement, local school boards can use or modify the VDOE modules as long as it does meet the requirement as the training is still in line with their guidance. So we'd want to provide that to you when we receive it.
And it's set for implementation this year. So I believe it's August. Is that correct?
It says by the beginning of the 2022-2023 school year. And the superintendent's email that has these requirements came out on April the sixth. So we just did receive this information.
To that last bit of information about us being able to edit the module, should that be put into our policy that we're adopting so that we know that that's written in stone and not just in a mail that may get wrapped up?
I'll give you a copy if you don't mind.
Okay, great.
It just says in accordance with guidance issues by the Board of Education. It doesn't say we're specifically using their training, I don't think.
I think the amendment most likely that Mr. Goodwin is handing out, I think there's alternatives to that.
Well, I mean, our policy doesn't say we're necessarily doing the state one.
Often times we use the state modules because they're fitted, they're well fought out, they're put together. But in this case, they do give the flexibility to make sure that that module meets the local school board's requirements for the teachers as well. And there's flexibility there as long as it meets the intent and the definition of the training. So we could adapt them a little bit for for our school system. Yes, my suggestion would be as soon as we receive that, that we let you see it. Sure. And we'll share it with you. And then you all take a look and see how you feel about it. We should receive that. Hopefully, it says in the coming months.
Which means we're going to receive it the day before school starts.
They did indicate the module they're developing is about a two and a half hour module. So it's a significant training. And it does meet the definitions that they've set forth in the superintendent's email. There actually is a link on there, if you were to have this electronically, that talks about, it's called the Guidelines for Uniform Performance Standards and Evaluation Criteria for Teachers. This was developed under the last governor that we had, Governor Northram. And then Governor Youngkin appointed a new person, Gillian Balo, for Superintendent of Public Instruction. So sometimes when things change at that level, then directions change. And so usually in the middle of there, there's kind of a seam. And so in working out that seam, I think that's probably the delay in the requirement. So the requirement is still there, but we do not have the actual module that they say meets the criteria. As soon as we receive that, again, we'd love to share that with you to take a look.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The only thing, you'd have to make sure that if you put together your own modules for a school division, you would have to meet the criteria that was set forth by the General Assembly and the legislation.
But that gives us, okay.
Any additional questions for Mr. Smith on this one? Mr. Valentine, did you receive any letters on this? Is there anyone that would like to speak on this first reading? So just so we know the timeline, the one that Mr. Smith just spoke about previously, that was our second reading. So the plan would be our third reading at our first of May meeting to vote. And then this is just our first reading. So our second one at the next meeting and then vote at that May work session. Next is going to be the presentation of the Program of Studies.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to bring up Ms. Bragg and Ms. Jordan. I'm going to move this out of the way. So every once in a while, you have to go through your Program of Studies because as teachers change, some leave, some come in, requirements with the state, requirements through dual enrollment, sometimes you just need to go through and kind of give an overhaul to your Program of Studies. And sometimes it's cleaning things up by removing designations or classes that are no longer being offered, that maybe you don't have the teaching staff for that anymore, or that maybe it was a dual enrollment course and they are no longer supporting that dual enrollment course through the community college. So you can no longer offer that. So this year was one of those years that we had really some some big changes through dual enrollment. So this was a time that we also wanted to take to go through our Program of Studies. And I want to thank Ms. Jordan for for working diligently on this. I know she had some help from from Ms. Bragg. And I know she worked with both guides counselors departments from each high school, both principals from each high school, and the guidance departments and the administration from the middle schools in putting this together and seeing kind of how we needed to change what what was actually relevant now to to our offerings and to our Program of Study. And so from that, I'm going to turn it over to Heather or actually Ms. Jordan to kind of talk about some of the things that she did as far as her process and what she did with the Program of Studies. And, oh wait, I think I've already handed that out. Yes, I handed that out. Now, Ms. Jordan is going to be talking off of the Program of Study changes. So you should have that document that I handed out to you.
Well, the changes that you see on their first good evening to everybody. And I'm glad it's not really cold anymore this afternoon, this morning and yesterday morning and the day before with the snow was a little surprise for April. But anyway, we are going back to warm weather. And I think that's nice except our kids get extremely excited when the weather first starts to get warm. So we might have some different type of changes to deal with in the coming months, but it'll be all right. Been there a lot of times and always works out. When I came in to substitute for Mr. Fox, I had a rude awakening, okay, about all the things that he's doing. And I'm only doing a part of it. But Program of Studies was something that I sort of came in right in the middle of the process. So as I was asking questions and trying to find out exactly where we were in looking at the Program of Studies for this year, it seemed like when I looked at the current Program of Studies, there were some things in there that I knew, some courses that I knew had already changed and some changes that I knew were coming. So in the beginning of the Program of Studies in the book, and and did you, they already have this?
Yes, they have a copy of that.
In the beginning of this, it's just some general information. And yes, there were some adjustments in the general information. And you'll see that if you go through. But one of the biggest things in the general information is that this year's graduating seniors are graduating with a new set of requirements. So as you go through that and look at the diploma requirements, in this year's Program of Studies, there were two different sets of requirements in there. Those for seniors who graduated before this year, and then the changes for for this year. So you can read through those and see that there have been some adjustments. The biggest adjustment, I think, you might recognize is that the number of SOL requirements have changed. Okay, so and that's the verified credit. The number of classes that you take and those credits are the same, but the number of verified credits for both the advanced study students and the general study students have have changed and are the same now. So our students who are advanced study students don't have quite as many verified credits. That's the SOL test that they have to earn in order to meet that graduation requirement. But they have added a couple of things in there and not very major, but it might change a little bit some of the classes that the students choose to take. But the guidance counselors are already on top of this and they have already looked at the graduating seniors to make sure that they are meeting this year's requirements. We were wondering whether or not there would be some adjustment because of COVID over the last couple of years. And that was also verified through one of the instructional resource team members. And the state has said no. But we have known for several years that those changes were coming in. So that should not give any problems. So that's the general information. Where the most changes occurred would be in the classes themselves. And even though that list looks like it's a lot, it really isn't because some of these courses had not been taken out of the Program of Studies, but you don't take it out immediately because it might be that a teacher did not come back who was able to teach that particular course. And you might keep it in the Program of Studies for a few years or really no more than a couple of years. And if you still can't offer it, you take it out and replace it with something else. So the way this is organized, the middle schools got together and it seemed like when we had both administrators and the guidance departments together, sometimes it was a thing of let's offer the same thing, or we are offering the same thing, but we're calling it something different. So that gave us an opportunity to talk to those administrators at the same time together and concentrate on the Program of Studies. So what we did was we went page by page this year and looked at everything in the Program of Studies. We looked at the definitions of the courses. We asked, are you offering this? You know, how long ago did you offer, so forth and so on. So in the end, the middle school, really the middle school, we only had to meet, I think, about a month. Okay, so that was the easier group to work with. And they removed a couple of courses. Both of them were not being taught currently. And then they added a couple of courses. And the couple of courses they added were exploratory courses. And the first one was, came about because as they scheduled some students, they found out that they had a little bit of extra capacity this year in the history department. And one of the teachers felt like she had a class that would be very engaging. So the history, history's mysteries on page 23 is being currently offered, and it's been very successful at this particular time. But again, it's a, it's an exploratory course. The other major change is that now students do not have to commit to a whole year program and either acquire the core program or the band program. And there have been some concerns because both those programs don't seem to be growing at the rate that we would like for them to grow. And then with COVID. And then with COVID coming in, it also made quite an impact with the students not being in school. So now students can sign up for a partial year of choir and/or a partial year in band, okay, to see if it works out for them before they sign up for a full-year program. So that was the major change as far as the middle school was concerned. At the high school level, again, it looks like several classes have been removed, but several of those classes had not been offered in several years. And I think the one that I noticed first was the Lady Wildcat Fitness because I happen to have been at Warren County High School. And I said, we haven't offered that for years. We didn't have the capacity, is what it was. If we had put that in, the last time that we offered it, I think there were only about 10 students who signed up for it, and it meant that we had classes with 40 kids in it. So when you're making that type of decision as a principal, it's easy to say, let's find something else for these 10 kids to do so that we can reduce the size of the other classes and make it a little bit more manageable. And Lady Wildcat Fitness just hadn't been taught in quite a while. With some of the others, Dr. Ballinger mentioned that with the dual enrollment classes, some of these were eliminated because some other classes were added. And Heather's going to talk about those a little bit more later, so I won't go into detail. The added classes, the same thing. The two that really didn't have anything to do with the dual enrollment, the African-American Studies, is currently being offered only as a virtual Virginia program. We do have teachers who are trained at both schools now who will be offering that class as an elective in both high schools next year. The film study class, I'm not sure what happened to it. It was not in this year's Program of Studies, but we have been offering it when the capacity was there, and it changed from an English class to a theater class because we had more capacity there. But those teachers, it seemed to fit there better anyway, and those teachers are certified to teach that class. And then this year, we did move some things around. You'll notice in the Program of Studies a little bit. Now the career and technical education section is not mixed in with the high school courses. At the beginning of the high school offerings, you'll see that there is a whole section put together with about career and technical education. And I talked with Jane Baker, who is here to answer any of those questions because it gets a little technical there. And she said that a lot of times the kids can't find exactly what they want when it's mixed all in. And so this year, we put a lot of the information about the licensure programs and career and technical education. And she put some beautiful charts together right at the beginning of each section to show the career pathways, in other words, what courses are offered that will help you move towards those careers. So when I talked to her and asked her to explain something to me, she said, oh, I think I'll be there tomorrow. I said, great, because some of those courses, I know those kids are making way more money than I made in my lifetime, but I can't explain them. And when I went to see them, I just said, oh, they're great, but I have no idea exactly what they did. So if you have questions about career and technical education, she's going to help. Well, no, she's not going to help. She's actually going to answer any questions that you might have about those particular courses. Some of these courses, she rotates, okay, based on the availability of teachers and based on how the programs run together. So one year she might offer one particular program that's not there this year, but next year, that program will come back. It might be a two-year type of program and the way she does that. And then, as you see, she is reintroducing a program this year, an architectural drawing, which was available several years back, many years ago. But now there's another, there's a teacher who's available, who's certified to teach that, and that's going to be reintroduced this year. So that's the general information about the Program of Studies. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them.
I just have a quick question about the project Lead the Way removal. I thought that was its own path. Like, once you do the project Lead the Way, either you're in the biomedical or you're in the engineering.
But it also, those classes, as individual classes, can also tie into other areas that we offer. For instance, the first year of engineering can also tie into some of our other technology classes. So a student who enters that class would not necessarily have to go through all four years. They could branch off depending on what their interest is. What we find with the first years of the biomedical program, two years makes them a completer. A lot of times, they will complete the first and the second year, but then they decide that they would prefer to slide over, for instance, and to go into the therapeutic side, which would be your CNA and your EMT and those. So not always does it lay out to be all forms of the biomedical years. But everything ties together.
So when everything ties together, Ms. Baker, the building trades could tie it together with your architectural drawing. Is that correct?
In a career pathway, yes, sir.
Thank you.
That's one of the reasons why the class is coming back into rotation as well, to pick up your technical drawing, your architectural drawing, then pick up your building trades, and then slide into your electricity or your carpentry into those classes as well. All those classes together make it a strong candidate when the student graduates to go into the trades.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the changes that occurred with dual enrollment. And Dr. Ballinger's going to hand out a couple of sheets for you. Both of these course curricula rosters are through the Virginia Council of Higher Education. It's all part of Transfer Virginia, which is a term that I think that we'll be hearing more and more about in the coming days and in the coming years. Transfer Virginia was an initiative by the General Assembly for the four-year higher education institutions and the community colleges to come together to develop a slate of guaranteed transfer classes. So what the General Assembly was addressing were concerns about students paying for dual-enrolled courses in high school or at the community college level. And then they've put up the money, they've put forth the work, they have the grade, and then they go to transfer to their four-year institution, and core credits don't transfer. So the parents are out, or the student is out the money, and really the work effort in some cases. So the four-year institutions and the community colleges work together to develop two pathways. The pathway that is on your paper in blue is the Passport. And then the one on the orangish color is the Uniform Certificate of General Studies. And the Passport is 16 credits of guaranteed transfer to a higher institution. And the Uniform Certificate of General Studies, which we'll refer to as the UCGS, is 30 hours of transferable credits to a higher institution. And through this realignment, and it has been a process, there have been changes that have occurred to the way things were traditionally done. We'll look at a couple of examples where courses have, at one time, been six credits. So for example, in English. If you dual-enrolled English 12, you got credit for six credits of English. It was an American literature and a British literature class that you got six credits for. Through this realignment, they have decoupled these courses. And so English 12 focuses on British Lit and the Virginia standards. Therefore, the dual-enrolled English 12 aligns with the British Literature course, which is English 245 now, to English, British Lit, English 245. So the students did lose three credits of English there, but those were three credits of English that were not going to transfer. So where courses have lost that coupling that used to be part of the way the system worked, we will see a decline in the number of credits that a student is totaling at the bottom of their transcript. However, they're taking credits that are guaranteed to transfer. So the whole point was to come together and create a list across the state that would transfer equally and benefit the students with the money and the effort that they've put forth. So this is really coming into effect across the state this year. There are some schools that are already following it. It does apply to classes taken back to 2020. But this is the first year that LFCC has shared this information with us. And so we, as a school division that offers quite a substantial number of dual-enrolled credits, are coming together to ensure that we're in line with what LFCC is able to transfer to a four-year institution. So that's a little bit about kind of how we got here and why there are several changes at the dual-enrolled level. The courses that have, or the subject area that has come up the most in discussions and emails and things like that with the board has been related to math. So I know I had shared some information with you all back in March about the reason behind some of the changes in math, but just to quickly review those, and then if you have any specific questions, we can certainly delve into it further. We're offering a new dual-enrolled course. It's Math 167. It's a five-credit course. It's called Precalculus and Trigonometry at LFCC. It is on both the Passport and the UCGS. It's at the bottom of page two for the Passport, and it's on page three in the middle, block five for the UCGS, if you're looking at the paperwork. So Math 167, five-credit course. In our Program of Studies, we refer to it as Math Analysis Precalc, but it is the Precalc Trig Class. We offered, for the first time this year, at Warren County High School only, the Math 161, 162, which is the equivalent of 167. At LFCC's recommendation, we're changing to offer Math 167 at both high schools. That saves the students from essentially purchasing one extra credit because that was a six-credit course. And the 167, again, was recommended by LFCC as the better way to go to prepare kids going into calculus. It's a five-credit course, it's taken in one semester. So that's a new course that will be at both of our schools.
And just let me say, I didn't put that on this one because you needed an explanation. It really is a course that was offered before. Math Analysis has been at the high school forever, but it was not offered as a dual enrollment course. And there might be a little adjustment to make sure that it meets the requirements of that, what was it, 167, changed from 161, 162? I don't believe I remembered that, but anyway. So I didn't put it on the quick list because I knew, like I said, that that particular course is not new. It is a change, but it wasn't a quick explanation of a change.
It's already called Math Analysis.
It's called Math Analysis now.
But it was more of an AP in the past, correct?
Math Analysis was not. It was just Math Analysis.
VDOE actually has a course called Math Analysis, and that's the course we were teaching. The content that is in the VDOE Math Analysis, some of that will overlap. It may not be a one-for-one, but some of it will overlap. And we are calling the course, let me just find it here.
It's Math Analysis.
Math Analysis Precalculus Dual Enrollment. So it's Math Analysis Precalc Dual Enrollment. It's at the top of page 58. That course does require that students have completed Algebra II. And it lays the foundation for the skills for higher-level math. So with that course, again, not exactly brand-new. It will be new at Skylab High School. It's an adjustment at Warren County High School. Math 245, which is found as Statistics I. Again, you're still in your block five on both the Passport and the UCGS. The change to Statistics is that it is, we currently offer Statistics Dual Enrolled. Students receive six credits for it, Stats I and Stats II. Stats II is being removed entirely from LFCC's course offerings. It does not transfer. It is three credits that students are paying for that you're getting no credit out of. It is not being accepted. So the reason for that change is much like similar to that English change. It's happening because students are paying for three credits of dual enrollment that are not going to go anywhere. They are not going to be accepted. According to my conversations with LFCC, they can only transfer three credits of Statistics, and that is it. So that course is basically being phased out. So we're phasing it out here to align with that Passport. So students will still be taking Statistics Dual Enrollment. It's still a one-semester course for three credits, but it's just for three credits. It's not for six. And some of this, I'm going to refer to it as like this decoupling, where it's like one high school credit equals six college credits. There was a superintendent's memo from December of 2020 that went through the process of coming in line with Transfer Virginia. So like I say, the working, the work that the community colleges and the four-year institutions has been happening for some time. It's just not coming into play. So there was a SOPS memo in December of 2020 that allows this decoupling, that no longer does one high school credit have to equal six college credits. That's why we're seeing some credits are now still six or five, and others are dropping down to three. They're allowing it to become about content coverage, not just one high school credit is automatically equal to six college credits because of seat time, basically. So that's why some of this has taken place. So the last two courses in math for discussion are Math 263 and Math 264, which is Calculus I and Calculus II. And it is our proposal going forward for next school year to offer Math 263, Calculus I. It is a four-credit course. It is a change. Currently, our students are taking year-long Preparation AP Calculus AB, which, if you take the AP AB test, it equates to Calculus I. Our students who are dual-enrolling it are currently getting credit for Calculus I and Calculus II, 263 and 264. After some, several discussions with LFCC, there has been some concern, and it's not specific to Warren County. It's specific to incoming students to four-year institutions, that students, two things are happening. Students coming in with Calculus II are not prepared to take the Calc III course on campus at their four-year institution. And some of that has to do with how the four-year schools are tailoring their Calc II courses for those upper-level maths. So if you're going into an engineering background, that Calc II is being tailored in a certain way. The other flip side of that is that some universities require students to take Calc II on campus anyway, even if you dual-enroll it. And, you know, we've had a couple of examples provided by our guidance counselors who talk to the counselors at these four-year institutions and specifically to the counselors at these four-year institutions, and specifically Virginia Tech was mentioned as a school that has required students to, to take Calculus II on campus at Tech. So, to streamline things, ensure our students that we're, that they're paying for credit that's going to transfer and that they are prepared for the next level of higher-level math, it's been our recommendation that our course become a one-semester Calculus I course. They'll have the opportunity to take the Math 167 to prepare them for the calculus, and then we'll offer Calculus, Calculus I, but not Calc II. There has been some discussion that Math 167, that's the Precalc Math Analysis course, will not transfer for students. That's a little bit inaccurate when we just flat-out say it won't transfer. It will transfer. It's part of both of the programs, the Passport and the UCGS. It just transfers in different ways. If you are a humanities major or a literature major, math precalc is way higher math than you actually need to meet your general studies requirement. So, it's going to count for those humanities majors as their math credit being met. If you are a STEM major who will take much higher-level math throughout your time on campus, the 167 will transfer as three general ed credits, but it won't transfer as your math credit because you are going to be taking substantially higher levels of math if you're in a STEM field than if you're in a humanities field. So, that's kind of the breakdown of the math changes. I know there's a lot of numbers and a lot of information related to those changes. So, if you have questions or more detailed explanation, I'm happy to answer those related to math or any of the other subjects if we have it, but I know math has been the one that's been in the conversation.
So, one thing I would like to do is on your sheets, we'll just, I wanted to allow you to mark the dual enrollment courses that we, that we are offering. And so, I will just use the UCGS, that's the orange one. So, if you want to put a check marked by English 111, 112, and those are three credits each, so that's a total of six credits. If you go to the Music 121, that's in block two, that's a three-credit class. On the next page, English 245, the Brit Lit, as Ms. Bragg mentioned earlier, that's a three-credit class. The one block that we have nothing in right now that would be a focus is that block three. So, you can see those are the places that we would be trying to get teachers that, to get a master's and to get the eighteen hours in content to be able to teach some of these classes dual-enrolled, because right now currently, we do not have any teachers that would meet the requirement to be able to teach dual enrollment in those courses. Block four, the Bio 101, General Biology, that's four. So, that's three for the course, one for the, for the lab. Also, for next year, Geology 105, that's a four-credit. Geology 105, that's a four-credit. Now, we also have, that's not on here, but is part, and it is within the transfer, and that's the Anatomy and Physiology. That is a dual enrollment. It is a four-credit, but that ties back into Jane. And Jane, you want to talk a little bit about what the Anatomy and Physiology requirement is?
The AP 142, or the Bio 142 is a good base Anatomy Physiology. A student who wants, for instance, to pursue becoming, for instance, an EMT or to move in that direction, or an LPN in those directions, that's the Anatomy Physiology class that they would take. A student wanting to go further into, for instance, medicine would need the two, the two Anatomy Physiology course. The reason we haven't pursued the two-class course is because we were told through conversations that the Bio 145 laid the best groundwork and it readied students for the Bio 141, 142. Those two Biology classes, or that Anatomy Physiology, those six credits are gatekeepers to get into, for instance, your nursing programs and those higher health and medical science programs. A student in high school usually is not mature enough to be able to handle all of that knowledge base and do well with it. So, what happens is, and what we've been told is, quite often, they score lower in those classes. So, when they get into the four-year or the post-secondary, it becomes competitive to get into these nursing or these other programs. They have a lower GPA with that class than most of their counterparts, so it winds up becoming a hindrance. So, we were told, and it was stressed very hard, that we need to really consider keeping the 145 because the other is such a gatekeeper. The students aren't prepared for it yet, and they wind up hurting themselves. And a lot of times, they have to actually repeat the course later on in order to get the GPA up for acceptance.
And then if you move into, and thank you, Ms. Baker, appreciate that. Moving into block five, Mathematics. So, the 245, the Math 245, Statistics I, that's three credits. Then, recommendation for next year is the 167, Precalculus with Trigonometry, five credits. Calculus I, that's Math 263, that's four credits. Moving down into block six, you have the bottom two, the History 121 and the History 122. Each of those are three credits. And then really, to get anything in block seven, you can use two of anything else from the previous blocks to help you meet the requirements of block seven. So, for instance, when you look at this to meet the UCGS, for instance, in math, it says, "Select one course." One course. Well, we offer two other courses, so you could take one of those courses and move it down to that block seven to also meet that requirement there as well. Same thing with the history. It says, "Select one course." So, we offer the two courses. So, therefore, you could slide that down and therefore you've met that requirement as well. So, I just wanted to provide you those numbers so you can see what courses within this that we actually have that meet, meet the UCGS. Now, we also have probably a couple of others that we're, we're working on, but, you know, again, we do have, you know, the main goal with dual enrollment, when I came in, and Warren County High School was an AP school with, with some dual enrollment, but the focus was all AP. And you had Skyline where the focus was all dual enrollment and, and with, with little AP. So, making that move to where we have a consistency with both schools and moving with dual enrollment is the way that we decided to go. LFCC is a great partner. We enjoy working with them. And so, by, by offering also to staff members to pay for the eighteen hours above, in content above the master's, to get those teachers to be able to be certified to teach dual enrollment, we have offered that. And I know we actually have teachers that are taking advantage of that as well right now to help with fill some of these classes at, at one of the schools that maybe we don't have a teacher in there now, that hopefully we will have that teacher in there shortly. So, there's a lot to go when, when you look at the dual enrollment. It can get really confusing at times. And really, as, as Ms. Bragg said earlier, the, the point of this realignment with the, the Passport and the UCGS was basically, students were just going and taking, taking courses and not really knowing would they transfer, will they not transfer, paying for them. Now, again, and, and I think I've brought this up here before, you know, the, the dual enrollment fee for our students is a little higher than it is in some other parts of the, the state, the Commonwealth. And so, that's why we've also put in the, the money this year to try to help with those dual enrollment costs. But we want to make sure that when we pay for something, it's going to transfer and that it's not going to be something that on down the line, a student go in there, enroll, and then it's just pushed to the side because it didn't transfer. And that does happen. I mean, those, those universities will only accept so many, so many transferred credits in.
So, right now, we have teachers at both high schools that are certified dual enrollment for each of these courses that we're planning to offer next year, or are there missing teachers?
Yeah, for the math, yes, there are teachers at both schools who can do all of the math courses. Warren County High School has a teacher who's just finishing the requirements to teach the, the US History Dual Enroll Course. He did take advantage of that program. He was teaching the AP US History, so he will be ready to take the dual enrollment credit. So, that dual enrollment credit is in the program of studies for this year. And with some work in conjunction with Skyline High School this year, the, there is a teacher there or teachers there who are taking care of the English Dual Enrollment part that was previously AP.
The other couple of courses where there's some discrepancy would be Music 121, which is offered at Skyline but not at Warren County. The Geology 105, which is offered at Skyline but not at Warren County, but students at both schools still have the Bio 101 option for that particular block four. And I think that those are the only ones where there's, where there's a discrepancy. Just to kind of follow on to what Dr. Ballinger said, your dual enrollment course offerings are entirely dependent upon your staff because it has to do with how your staff is credentialed that you can offer dual enrollment. So, any kind of staff changes can automatically impact what you're able to, what you're able to offer through dual enroll. The requirements for dual enroll are a master's degree, then you have, then you have to have eighteen hours within the content that you are seeking to dual enroll. So, you can have a master's degree in something that's not necessarily related to the content that you're dual-enrolling, but if you get the additional eighteen hours, then you can teach a dual-enroll course. Or, on the other hand, if your degree is, and your graduate degree is in that content, then you're going to have the eighteen hours of graduate-level work in that, in that course to offer it. So, it is dependent upon your staffing. So, every year, your dual-enroll course offerings have the potential to go through some change, whether that's to add something that you haven't had or something has to be taken out that you were able to offer previously. And, you know, I, I would just like to say that I, I think going through this process has been real eye-opening for us. We have a great product here. Warren County is able to offer almost an entire thirty credits on our own campus without students having to even go to LFCC to complete their coursework to transfer to a four-year institution. As Dr. Ballinger noticed, we're a little, we're a little short on that block three with the social behavioral sciences, but we're aware of that and we're, you know, looking for potentially candidate that can, that can complete that or someone who is interested in, in pursuing one of those subject matters. The easiest place to pick it up is in the Political Science 135. That's your government course, and that's typically where high schools are able to pick that up at because we have to teach 12th grade government already. So, it's an easy crossover for someone who's interested in getting those eighteen hours in government. But I think that it's a real credit to the division to be able to offer this amount of dual enrollment in-house.
Could you walk me through, basically, when a student, if they started Algebra in eighth grade, because they can, right, if they're on that track, and we end up stopping our maths at Calc I, when would they take that last course if they followed this? I'm trying to, I should have worked this out before. Would they finish it at the spring of their junior year? I know we do the four-by-four. I'm trying to see when their math would stop. Just flip to our courses. So, they would take-
You have geometry, you have Algebra II, you have the stats, you would now have the math analysis, and you would have the calc I. So, that's still five math courses above the Algebra I that you would take within your, at your eighth-grade year. So, coming in as a freshman, typically they're going to be, if you took Algebra I as an eighth grader, you're going to take Geometry. Then typically that next year, or sometimes you'll see students that next semester will take an Algebra II, but they can take that as a sophomore, Algebra II. Sometimes they'll take it the next semester if they're going into Chemistry because Algebra II is a requirement for Chemistry, so it depends upon, on that track. And then, once they get into, after, after your Algebra II, then for your next two years, you would have the stats, because your dual enrollment, you can't start taking your dual enrollment until you're in eleventh grade. So, so you would have your stats, your math analysis, and your calc I, three classes to take within two years.
So, probably the fall of your senior year.
It could be the fall or the spring of your senior year, depending upon when that, that course would be offered.
It's still a pretty full slate for the reason Dr. Ballinger said, that you don't take dual enrollment until you're in your junior year.
So, you can't take that class if you're not, if you're not dual-enrolling?
You can take the class if you're not dual-enrolling. Yes, so students can? Students can sign up for the class and then just not pay to dual-enroll it, or to dual-enroll it. We asked our guidance counselors, you know, about how many kids do that. It's, it's a minimal number of students that typically do it. However, with the new requirements for graduation that Ms. Jordan had mentioned, one of those is that students need to take an advanced class, AP Dual Enrollment on or something like that. So, with that new graduation requirement coming into effect, you know, you may get a few more students who end up taking something that's labeled dual enrollment and going through the coursework, but not necessarily paying for the, the credit. Yeah, but yes, you can enroll it.
Is that just for the Advanced Diploma?
No, that's for both. Yes, yes. That, that is, that is, it's a one-course requirement, and it is for both the standard and the AP Diploma. Or Advanced Diploma, not AP, sorry.
There are two other courses that have Algebra II as a prerequisite in the math department. It's a trig probability course that students can take after Algebra II. There's also a discrete math course that they can take. A lot of the kids will choose the probability and the trigonometry probability course after they take the stats. It depends on the major that they're going into in college. Sometimes the, wherever they, what their intentions happen to be or not, they decide that calc is not what they want or what they might need. They've done some investigations, and they might take the trig course. So, that's still above Algebra II. So, there's still math offerings there for them to take.
Would they take that instead of Math Analysis or in addition to Math Analysis?
They can take it in addition, in addition, yes.
And those would not be dual enrollment, those two?
Yes, those two are not dual enrollment.
Right, but they both are trigonometry.
Trigonometry, probability, and statistics is one of them. And sometimes they will take, students will, they might be sort of on the borderline about, do I really want to take, you know, statistics? Do I really need to go to that level? So, they will take this one instead. Now, the discrete math usually is a little different. Students who take the discrete math course will usually take it after the Algebra II, but they're not, not really interested in going, well, what used to be the AP course now is the dual enrollment stats course. So, there are some options there for students to continue to take math without necessarily going to dual enrollment course. And a lot of our liberal arts, our artists, our musicians, you know, they, the math-science line, they can do it, but they rather spend time doing some artistic-type of things, some fine arts things, and they make those choices.
And there are VDOE standards for those courses. There's just not an SOL test. So, there are standards for discrete math, and then there's two different sets of standards for trig and probability and statistics. So, there's still, you know, a set of expectations set forth- set forth by the state. They're just not SOL-tested.
Do you see a benefit to still offering Calc 2 but not doing it as dual enrollment, or offering those students that take the dual enrollment Calc 1 in the fall, the opportunity to go to Lord Fairfax Campus to do the second one in spring semester?
I mean, they certainly have that opportunity. I mean, students certainly have the, the opportunities to go to LFCC to, to take, to take a course, um, that we don't offer here. As far as offering it without dual- enrolled credit, um, I don't know what the interest, I don't know what the interest would be because it would prep them, for those STEM majors, it may prep them with some foundational skills that they're going to, you know, that they would need in that Calc 2 course going forward. But I don't know as though, um, I don't know as though there's an advantage offering that high level of a math without kind of the, the dual enrollment carrot.
That was the reason I was thinking, just to kind of keep moving with math. Um, I was not the arts mind that Ms. Jordan referred to, so, um.
Why do we not just offer it? I mean, well, I remember what you were talking about, about some places not accepting it and whatnot, but why not still just offer it as dual-enrolled and just tell them that upfront, what the issues might be?
I mean, it's a choice.
So, so there's a couple of things you need to consider when you're looking at, at, at the dual enrollment. Um, so when you, you look at what has previously been our dual, our, our program with Calc 1 or Calc 2, and as you heard Heather mention that there's been some, it's AP, um-
AB.
AB. Um, and even when we had the AP BC.
No, we've never had that.
Oh, okay, but, but, okay. So AP, but they were, they were doing the, the Calc 2, but then when those students would go to take the AP test, the only test that they took was for the Calc 1. So that was it. They didn't get the Calc 2, so there was really no Calc 2 being, being taught there. Uh, when you look at what our Program of Studies has said in the past, it has said, "A prep calc going into a calculus." So, you know, what is the definition of the prep calc going into the calculus? Um, you know, I think that if you want to look at offering Calc 2, then there needs to be two different courses. It's not going to be this year-long of rolling one into another, because when you look at, um, some of the information that we get from LFCC concerning prerequisites for the Calc 2, that a student that, that has a C in Calc 1 should not be taking Calc 2. Well, when I go back and research and look at some of our, our history with some of our students that were in Calc 1 and then went to Calc 2, that there were a lot of Cs there, that then they went on into the Calc 2, and they still struggled in Calc 2. So then what are you setting those students up for when it comes to the financial aid? If they fail a class, then that could hurt them on down the road for financial aid when they get into a four-year university. So there's some other things you need to, to take into consideration when you look at that Calc 2 class. Also, as Heather mentioned earlier, that if four-year universities are requiring those students to take it over again, then that means it's only counting as a general elective. So if it's, you can only transfer so many general electives. So if that Calc 2 is only going to be a general elective, then you're going to push, maybe they took that, that Math Analysis as dual-enrolled, so now is that Math Analysis even going to transfer because you can only take so many general electives with you when you push over into it. Um, so really, we need to look at, do we want to make sure that our students are prepared for when they, when they get to the, the four-year university, and make sure that we are putting our best foot forward? This, this realignment is not to, to try to, to cut programs. I'm a big dual enrollment fan. I love dual enrollment. Um, that is, that's why it's my push to get as many dual enrollment teachers as we can to offer the programs. But again, it comes down to, what are we? We are a high school. We offer a high school diploma, and we're offering an opportunity for students to get dual enrollment credits to help them in college. And also, when you go back and look at some other things to consider, you know, yes, we know that we, you know, there, there could be staffing shortages going on into next year. What, what's going to be our priority? Is it going to be the priority of having, you know, 15 to 18 students in, in a Calc 2 class, or is our priority going to be the 35 students or the 30 students that we have in a Geometry class? You know, how big are those courses going to get on down the line? You have to take those things into consideration, too. But I think if, if you want to move forward with a Calc 2, then it needs to be, this semester is Calc 1, and this semester is Calc 2. None of this rolling in from one to the other, and it continuing. And that if a student doesn't want to take Calc 2, they drop it. And the other thing, I, I talked to Heather about this earlier, that maybe to make sure that we, that we are doing our due diligence with, with the, the higher-level courses, do we need to change our schedules? Do we need to look at moving with some of our courses to, to an AB schedule, and doing those year-long versus, versus just the, the 4x4? So there's some other things to consider there as well. Um, but when you look at what other counties are offering, you have, um, Clark offers Calc 1 year-long. Then you have, there's two schools in Frederick that offer Calc 2. I think it's Calc 2, correct? Calc 2, year-long. Um, as far as the other schools around us, um, Winchester would offer them. They, they offer them as well. Actually, we have that sheet in my way.
Yeah.
Yeah. Instead of trying to remember off the top of my head.
And just while Dr. Ballinger's passing that out, and you'll see it on the sheet there as well, um, students do have the opportunity that, that choose to go to Mountain Vista. They are offering, you know, a Calculus 2 and even a 3 option at Mountain Vista, uh, which is where you will find STEM majors and things like that, those students that want to become STEM majors oftentimes applying. Does it cover everyone? No, but just so that you're aware, um, those, those students at Mountain Vista do have beyond Calculus 1 as part of their slated classes, if that's the pathway that they choose.
And that's going to transfer for them, or do they just?
Calc 2 will transfer as part of the UCGS. It is not part of the Passport, and Calc 3 is not on either one, so that's pretty high-level. That's going to get into where, where, where you're, where you're trying to transfer them to. You know, there is an element of that that's still at play. These are your guaranteed transfer credits. Um, you know, we're offering a few others, a handful of other courses that are dual-enrolled that are not part of this Passport or UCGS, and then that's going to be entirely dependent upon the four-year institution you're trying to transfer to.
Can you explain the process to me? How were our math teachers involved in creating this Program of Studies?
So, starting back in October, November timeframe, proposals for new courses and, and through their principals, they can make proposals for new courses and changes to the Program of Studies. It's my understanding that the, uh, principals at, at the high schools and middle schools let the teachers know, give them the pieces of the Program of Studies for input changes, changes to the course description, and submit that through their principals. Then, um, I think our first meeting this year was around mid-December. The guidance counselors and the principals, as Dr. Ballinger initially stated, come together with, um, it was myself and Mr. Fox at the, at the time, and our testing coordinator to look at what changes are going to happen, to go through the proposals for new courses. And Ms. Baker is there as well, and we talk through what, what proposals are going to be considered and accepted, or what proposals for courses and other changes and things like that. We discuss, discuss those changes there.
I have met with, um, one of the dual enrollment math teachers a couple of times, and I know the other dual enrollment teacher, I, I know that, um, the principal met with that, that dual enrollment teacher and had this conversation with, with them.
My slight concern was, once the agenda came out, the number of math teachers that were reaching out with concerns, didn't give me a great feeling, so really.
But you only have two dual enrollment math teachers at, at both schools.
Well, would all the math teachers get, to have an opinion on it?
I talked, we talked to both dual enrollment teachers.
Are those, so those are the only math teachers in high schools, are you saying? Are the two dual enrollment teachers the only two math teachers in both of the high schools?
No. So when you look at your dual enrollment, the only ones that are teaching these classes, you have one at Skyline, you have one at-
So we're saying two different things.
And I've, and I've talked to, to one, and the principal talked to the other.
Right, so you and I are saying two different things. I'm, I'm saying, why not include all of the math teachers at those schools in these discussions?
So one of the reasons would be because they're not teaching the course, so I want to have the conversation with the instructor that's teaching the course.
Okay, so we just don't care what the other kind of teachers say? Is that what I'm understanding?
Because I'm talking to the one that's teaching the course, not that I don't care what other teachers say. I'm addressing it with the teacher that it's going to affect. I'm not going to go talk to every teacher when it comes to, you know, if, if I'm going to look at a Algebra 1 about combining classes, I'm not going to go talk to my dual enrollment teacher that it's affecting with my Algebra 1. So I'm going to, I'm going to talk to the teachers that it's going to affect.
Whereas, the teachers that are teaching all of these lead-up courses, I mean, I think they had some good ideas, and I think they deserve to be heard. That would just be my recommendation. If we're going to send out, we're going to take the time to send out surveys and studies on things as, as trivial as cell phones, to let not only the teachers be heard, but the parents and the students be heard on something as, as trivial as cell phones, I think when we're talking about something as serious as a core subject of mathematics, that we should give all of our math teachers a voice in being heard, and what, what they're seeing. Because what that math teacher's seeing in Algebra 1, who might not be a dual enrollment math teacher at calculus level, they're building, building the foundation for what is leading into calculus 2.
And so when you look at the found, when you, when you, when you talk about that, one of the things that you also need to look at is, what are your SOL pass rates for the schools in the past five years? You have one school that's been stellar as far as over the last couple of years. So when you look at comparison of pass rates, uh, back to 2015, 16, you have Skyline High School, that's a 69% pass rate, Warren County is 75. Um, that means your, your, your pass rate, the cut score is 70. So then you go into the next year of the 16, 17, a 77, and a 77 at both schools. Uh, then the next year, 17, 18, uh, Skyline High School pass rate is 72, Warren County jumps up to a 79. 18, 19, Skyline High School a 68, SOL pass rate, Warren County a 96. And then you look at 19, 20, Skyline High School a 78, and Warren County High School an 89. And so when you look at, at those numbers also, what, what else is going on? And so are those students truly being prepared if you only have, in some years, 60, 68%, not even meeting benchmark past those SOLs? So we have to make sure that we're meeting those SOL standards as well.
I, I don't see how what you're saying is not relevant to listening to the teachers because a lot has come out during this whole process with how things are being done with the math, and where these math teachers feel that the struggles are being had. And I, I have to say, I agree with them. When you've got kids who take math for half a year, and then, let's say they take a math in the spring, they take nothing, or if they take one in the fall, they take nothing in the spring, and then they might not take math again until that following spring. I mean, I, to me, when I'm looking at, and granted, I view things differently, um, I look at not necessarily counting what credits you're going to get for this college or that college. It's, it's a matter of mastery. And would I want my high schooler to go a full year without a math? No, because, because that was me. I, I was that math achiever who finished every math course that was offered in my high school by the time I was in 11th grade, and then went without. And so with my children, we do math over the summertime as well, and it's continuous. And I have a seventh grader who's, rising seventh grader, doing algebra, so she's ahead of the game. I don't want her going without math. So when we have math teachers who, who have maybe poor SOL scores saying that they need math year-round, I think we need to hear them.
Well, they do still have math year-round, so if you have your three dual enrollment credit, uh, dual enrollment classes at the high school level, that means you take one your junior year, one your senior year. You still get your math, and that leaves you one dual enrollment course that you still haven't taken yet. So what you're going to get is some of them taking those multiple years, or multiple courses in one year. They'll take one in the spring, one in the fall.
There have, there have been discussions through the years, so what you're talking about with math year-long, it is a schedule, it's a scheduling, it's a scheduling discussion, which we have had many times at different points in time, and Ms. Jordan may be able to provide the historical background on how many times we've had discussions. Um, you know, that, that 4x4, AB day, year-long, seven-period class, that's, it's always, um, you know, out there as what, what is the best scheduling option to pursue. I think that since there is oftentimes so much about the schedule across the country, we haven't developed the perfect system, or their scheduling wouldn't be a discussion because that's what one, everyone would be doing, because, because it works. I understand exactly what you're saying, and math isn't the only class that can get into that cycle of gapping between, um, you know, a student taking something in the fall and then not taking it for basically close to a year later before they're picking up the next, uh, the next section. So I, I do understand what you're saying. I think the discussion about our schedule, and Dr. Ballinger mentioned, do we need to look at having some A-day, B-day classes, that sort of thing, is a different discussion, although I think it relates. It, it's just, that wasn't the, the, the piece on the table this year. Um, we did look at, the last time I can think of looking at AB 4x4 was-
It was before me.
It was. It was the spring before you. I think it was the spring of, uh, maybe 2021? 2020? Spring of 2020. Spring of 2020 is the last time that I recall us having a discussion about the schedule.
I hear exactly what you're saying, and, and I taught French, and it's the same thing. Sometimes I had to, yes, foreign language I was in when we did the research on the different schedules. And foreign language, Performing Arts, math, all of them, and, um, English sometimes, too, but they said that the effect wasn't as much, I can't quote you who the researchers were now. It wasn't as difficult as it was in the Performing Arts, the foreign languages, and possibly the math. So I'm, I, I'm not, but the, where it affected kids most was at the, at the lower levels, okay, um, of the spectrum, dealing with that, like from Algebra to Geometry or, or something like that, when they talked about it. Maybe they didn't look at the other part of it. I, I, I'm not sure that, that that's the discussion right now. As far as whether to offer Calc 2 or not, as a supposedly-retired educator, um, I'm just going to tell you, sometimes there's an opportunity cost. And you have to, as a principal, sometimes you can't offer everything that you want to. In a perfect world, I would offer anything to any student that they wanted, okay? But I have to look at the absolute needs of the school in general. And when I'm looking at, and when I'm looking at the forest as opposed to one tree, sometimes some decisions has, have, have to be made there. some decisions has, have to, have to be made there. To me, that's sort of more the discussion right now with that, maybe not, but that's the way I see it. When I came back, okay, temporarily, okay, and Heather started talking to me about Calc II, my reaction is, we don't offer Calc II unless you all just started it this year. And she said, yes, I know, I said, no, we offer Prep, Calc, and Calculus. Okay, Calculus I, I said, we always gave the, um, AP tests with Calc I, A-B. We did not offer the B-C, which was my understanding of what the Calc II was. So then she explained to me that, well, Lord Fairfax gave them credit for Calc I and Calc II. Okay, sometimes I go to be very, you know, simplistic. Well, why didn't we call it Calc I and Calc II if that's what we were offering? Why weren't we testing the AP kids with the B-C, which is the Calc II, if that's what we were offering? And then I said, I don't have to deal with this anymore, remember I'm retired? And I walked away. So I, I think, you know, I don't think it's a bad decision anywhere. Yes, Warren County got to the point that we were doing extremely well with our math subjects, but that's because we were looking at, and the whole department really knew that we had to figure out a way to get our kids through algebra, it's required for graduation. And maybe I tend to look at things a different way, but first, I have to get, I mean, I want to stay accredited, absolutely, and I want 90% pass rate, but if I don't have 90% pass rate, that means that some of my kids are not graduating. And that concerned me, you know, very much so. I do care about the upper level kids and, you know, being prepared for colleges and everything, but I know those kids can go to college and if they have a good education, if the basics are good, they're gonna learn the upper levels, okay? They have the foundation. We can give them, we have community college, we have Lord Fairfax right here. We can offer them, you know, okay, I might not have it right here because I only have six or seven kids, and that's what ended up with, you know, with the calc class right here. But I can make arrangements, you know, for you to get some independent study. We have independent study there, that you can work with a math teacher. We always try to work with all of our kids. But, you know, so that's, and, and I don't mean to, but I am passionate about education, even though I'm still supposed to be retired. I, I do care very much so for the kids in Warren County, and I want the majority of our kids to come out with an education where they are ready to be competitive at whatever they decide to do. Okay? And I have, I have had some kids that come back and say, you know, I had to retake this math, but I felt prepared when I went in, okay, to be able to do different things at different levels with the, I still say, with that program at Blue Ridge Tech Center, they make way more money than any of us regardless of what levels we take what. But that's just, and, and I probably should shut my mouth now, but that's, but I do, I do get concerned, and like I said, when I would see an Algebra I class, okay, with 30 kids in it, I said, that's not happening. So I, yes, I would go and I'd talk to the teachers and I said, we can't have this because these are the Algebra I kids in the eighth grade are usually very capable, but when they get to the ninth grade, if they have not taken Algebra yet, they are needy and they need a lot of attention. And you can't put 35 kids in a room like that without having enough time to give them that confidence to be able to be prepared for graduate. And they cannot graduate without a verified credit in math. So the opportunity, I talked to them earlier today and I said, if everything is possible and you have all the resources in the world, then fine. If there's no opportunity course, there's fine, because I, I wasn't there when Lord Fairfax came. But I just don't feel like the intent was to cut out something. When Lord Fairfax came in and started talking about, you know, the, the Virginia transfer, and I had to look at it, I didn't intend to, but I had to look at it very closely to try to understand what was happening with the Virginia transfer course. And I still say, we have, for a small community, we have a lot of resources, we have the community college right there, we have teachers who are interested in all kinds of things. I mean, like, Mr. Hirsch wants to offer a sign language course, and right now, it's a club, but I expect at some point, it's going to be a class, because it's something that's of interest to the kids that, that we work towards. So I don't necessarily feel like, you know, anything is a bad thing when you're looking at the overall picture of what we want in general for our kids. And, and no, it doesn't meet every individual's absolute wants, but I think Warren County does a pretty good job with, with trying to get our kids, all of us, all of our kids, regardless, to a point where they can make some choices and move on. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to get all my, my soapbox here. And you can send me home because I am retired. You can just tell me, we don't care what you think, go home.
Are you sure you're retiring?
I, I, you know, my family is forgetting to ask me. Um, that, and, um, and I do, I just, you know, like I said, I, I, I try not to get too emotional about it anymore because that was one of the reasons, I'm like, I'm tired, it's time to go. So that's why I did retire. But I do, I feel I am extremely passionate about education, and, and I do tend to look at the whole situation. Yeah, so decide what you want, it's okay. Make a decision and go with it. Just don't hurt people. I just say, just, you know, first do no harm, and that's, when I scheduled, when I did scheduling, I kept looking at it, I said, first do no harm. You know, what, where is the, is there, are we hurting anybody by doing this?
Is there any other discussion on the program of studies for tonight? So the plan will be for us to vote on the program of studies at our May meeting. I should have wrote a calendar, I don't know what the date is for that.
I would really love, and hopefully all the math teachers will have a chance to watch the video tonight, but I always use the little Cosby analogy of, you can have a beautiful meal, but if it's served to you on a trash can lid, then it's not so appealing. You guys explained everything wonderfully tonight, but I think if we didn't have some of our math teachers surprised when the agenda came out, that maybe we would have gotten different feedback. I don't know what you're-
I know that-
We had, we had meetings-
Like, we met with, um-
At both schools, we went-
Most, I was asking, you said you only met with the one-
Well, I met personally with them, but we did have, when we had the program of studies, when we did the first rough draft with some of this stuff, we did go to the schools-
Like, I attended a meeting at Skyline High School right before spring break, so it was the, it was the Monday, and Dr. Ballinger was there as well, it was the Monday before spring break where Mrs. Spurling invited her school improvement team, as well as anyone else who was interested in attending the changes to the program of study as they were being proposed. And, um, you know, teachers were aware of that in, at Skyline High School, and teachers did attend that meeting where we went through the changes to the English, the math, the science, you know, all of the subjects that were having any, not just dual enrollment, but were having any changes to either courses being added or deleted, or, or just changed as far as the description goes, so-
Talk about additions, that's one of the meetings that we had, the biology teachers wanted to talk about adding an honors biology. So we had discussion about honors biology at that meeting with them at that point in time.
So I don't think that it's, that, the, the first time that teachers have seen the program of studies was not when the agenda was posted last week. Okay, so next, we sent out the cellphone, um, policy study or survey. Those results have been posted. As mentioned previously, we had surveys that went out to get parent opinions, staff opinions, and student opinions. I think that we got a lot of responses, a lot of input from all three categories. Tonight is mostly just for discussion and hopefully for us as a board, um, just to give some guidance to Dr. Ballinger and Central Office on, we want an updated policy on cellphone use in schools, and if we do, just some basic jumping off points for them to start working on a policy to bring to us at future meetings. So I thought personally, like, one of the most interesting things on the student responses is just how many clicked on the use of cell phones for academic dishonesty and cheating and that that was a big concern, it seemed like, for them, as I was scrolling through it all. I don't know what everyone else thought.
I'm, I'm ready to be done with the cell phones in the classrooms. I think they need to stay in the book bags. I think we owe that to every taxpayer in this county that is funding our school system for children getting education. Not to get photographed, shamed online, cheated, et cetera, et cetera. I think it should just be cut and dry, very simple. Cell phones don't come out in class, period. Um, I don't think the teachers should have to be burdened with, you know, collecting them and holding it, like, it just, they don't come out. If you finish your work early, read a book.
Yeah, I don't agree with, um, you know, there was some discussion that some teachers allow them as reward and some don't. I do feel like that sets some teachers in a bad position viewed from both sides, because, you know, one teacher's allowing it, another one's not, that sets a bad, I think, just example, moving forward from, from one class to the other adds the will for everyone in that case.
Well, and, and on the, what stuck out to me was on the staff, you know, do you allow cellphone use during class at appropriate times? It's, it's a 53-47. I mean, I think that's very telling. So we need to be consistent, and that's, that's a split down the middle.
But it's also something like 50% that have to tell students one to five times during class to put their phone away, so-
True, true, how many times are you telling them?
Yeah, they're going insane. They're saying that the whole hour and a half.
There are 55% are to, having to tell them-
There should be no more.
One to five times, yeah.
If it's out, it's, it's mine. The only question at that point is, does the teacher give it back at the end of the class? Maybe the first time after that? Nope, it goes down the office, parent has to collect the, I think the problem will solve itself as soon as everybody is, is enforcing it and is strict on it.
I'm sure you guys saw it, but some people included links to other school cellphone policies, and there are other ones online to kind of go by as well, and I think some places are doing sort of similar, um, the three strikes and different, you know, you get told once and then it gets held for the day, and then after that, you know, maybe.
I would like to see more consistency. I'm not sure if that is something we should write as a board policy, or if it's something that's better handled in the code of conduct for schools, since it is pretty specific to student behavior, but I think either way, whichever way it's gonna be approached, it, I do think we need something rather than this piecemeal situation we have right now.
I think in the code of conduct, and that's one of the things that parents and students sign in our list of signature pages at the front of our handbook, you know, we're all agreeing that this is what's gonna hap, what the expectation is, and this is what's gonna happen if you don't follow it.
I have a little different take on this. I was thinking, and I had a call from, uh, a person well-known in the county, and they were suggesting that each teacher, you have, you have one set of rules for cellphone, uh, cellphone use in the classroom, and then each teacher could decide if they wanted to have cell phones in their classroom. And then that way, the teacher is, has ownership of that decision and more authority to punish a kid that abuses the cellphone. That's kind of like, net, kind of goes with your split, 50-50. So, um, I was studying on that a little bit, and that, that might work because each teacher has the ownership, they make the decision, no cell phones, well, it's pretty clear cut, no cellphone. And the other one says cellphone under these circumstances for this classroom, they have a set of guidelines for each teacher that's going to allow the cellphone. That's the only thing I was-
But why do they really need the cellphone when everybody's 1-0 in Warren County?
I mean, why do they need it out? I, I know parent responses, they, it was very important that they have it with them, I understand that.
Right.
I see no reason for it to be out in the classroom.
You what?
I, I see no reason for it to be allowed by any teachers in the classroom.
Like I said, I have a different take on it.
No, I was just-
No, no, that's fine.
Well, I think a lot of the students said that, you know, they'll use their earbuds to listen to music.
And that they're allowed to in certain classes, as long as they have one ear in and one ear out? No, I'm sorry, but you're not learning.
It's like independent work, if they're doing independent work, you know, because I, I think kids nowadays, they can, you know, whether it's positive or negative, they can multitask much more, um, sick, you know, efficiently than, than 20 years ago, you know? I, I don't think I was ever gonna, would ever be a student that's gonna listen to music in my ear and, and do work, but I think, um, I mean, that still surprises me, but I think students, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but then that leads to, well, if you're gonna let them be out to listen to music, it's a matter of, you know, managing it for that classroom and, you know.
Right, and then you have to confirm that's what they're doing, they're doing something else.
Yes, it puts it more back on them for, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm sympathetic to that. We did have several students who say they work better with music, and I, I do believe that's true. I think there are students that work better, but as the teacher, you don't know what they're listening to, you don't know what it is, and so that's just impossible to manage. 25 students all listening to music, and probably 20 of them are, but five of them might not be, and I just don't think that's a good use of our teachers' time.
Right.
So how do we want to move forward?
Well, I mean, I do want to see something that goes in our handbook at the front with our other opt-out student code of conduct pages, whenever they're signing, this is its own separate page. And I think just whatever the clear consequences are, you know, you get a warning, you get it taken away for the day, your parent gets called, they have to come pick it up, I don't know. I mean, I think they get inconvenient.
I think consistency, and, you know, if, if a, if a teacher is having difficulty, they need that support to make, to say, okay, this is, you know, this is an issue, I've done this, this, now I need that additional support, and it needs to be consistent across the board.
Right, and the more consistent it is, the easier it is as a teacher to implement. I mean, it starts to become a non-issue once people are used to it.
It's not that teacher that's making a hard roll, that's just-
It's like, oh, Mr. Jones, I didn't make many of this, you don't have to be that teacher.
All right, so the only question, if we're gonna go across the board, no cell phones out in class, period? Or that lunch in common areas? Are we good with that? Are we not good with that? Are we?
I'd be interested to hear what our administrators in our buildings want to do with that. I mean, they've seen this data as well. I'd be interested to hear what, what they would want us to do, they would want to do. I mean, I, I can see both sides of that, right? Because sure, if it's lunch, why not listen to music or do whatever you're doing, check the weather, but also that's, you know, if a fight happens, then, oh, I have my phone, I'm gonna report it, and that's exactly what you were talking about. So there's no way to, I don't think you can do both. I don't think you can say they can have it at lunch, but you can't report a fight, that's not realistic.
Well, a lot of students cited, you know, having their, having pictures taken, that they didn't want it posted, that that was a source of bullying against other students, and when is that gonna happen? It's gonna happen at lunch, yeah.
I mean, I'm good with an out of sight all day policy. Like, we see it, we're taking it.
I think there was one, um, one of the online policies that I read that-
I think there was one, one of the online policies that I read that said, it clearly stated, because of the question about parent communication, this would be the time that you could expect your student to be able to text back and forth with you, like, I don't know, that's like some 15-minute window, like, and they cleared, they had that posted on the website, they had it, I guess, probably posted on the form as well, but that was, you know, when you, during school hours to communicate, they would have their phone.
Well, I ran a little test. I texted a kid in my neighborhood at, other than lunchtime, and I did not get a text back until after school. I texted my grandson, and he texted me back right away saying, I'll call you after school. Well, he was in some class when he did that, so, and then another kid that I texted did not respond until after school. So the two Warren County kids responded after school, and my grandson who goes in Loudoun County responded during a class period, I'll call you later, I'm in a class. So he had it out, so anyway.
Do your neighbor friends, are they not supposed to have theirs out? Like, have they been told by their parents not to bring them out during the day?
I don't know, I didn't go that far with the test. I just wanted to see what would happen.
Because some of the students did put that as answers, that they don't have them out during school, and some of the parents put that as well, that they're not to use them during school.
Oh, I just lost board docs. But yeah, that was, it's kind of interesting.
One of our students...
I had a talk with my son about that one.
And as everybody saw, we did not have jammers in the school, as Mr. Grant showed that it's illegal to do that, it's just...
Terrible service.
The schools are in a bad cell location. So far, I've kind of just been taking notes here as far as, as you have been discussing, basically you're just looking at, kind of wanting to, one, there needs to be more consistency, that's one of the things that I keep hearing. What's our process or our steps as far as discipline goes? We're looking at that. Also, you know, there's been some communication about just, you know, the cell phones just don't come out, period. Also, question still, I don't think there's, you haven't said anything as far as what about lunchtime, free time? We did have that discussion there a little bit, so that's...
I think as far as consequences go, one question would be legally, you know, I don't want us to get ourselves in trouble either because these phones are expensive phones, they are phones that parents are paying for, they're personal property, so, you know, one, what's our liability with some of these consequences that we've thrown out, you know, holding them, putting them in a bin, whatever we're going to do, and what can we legally do with those?
I would think the recommendation would be to, you know, if it's an issue that you call the parent, have the parent just come pick it up that day. I mean, that's, that way you're removing all that liability of, you know, one, removing the phone, or if a student doesn't want to give you the phone, then you're getting into another situation that, you know, could continue to escalate. So I think the best process would be, one, ask them to put it away, two, if they don't, then the parents call to come pick it up. And then, or you, what would that be? You know, you can't have it on for a month or five days or whatever, whatever the process we wanted to go with.
Well, the current policy sets up being confiscated, so I would say...
I must have spelled that up because I know that that came up several times from parents, that this is the phone that I bought that I paid for, you know?
Oh, yeah, we wouldn't hold it from the parent, it would be taken from the child, so, pick it up.
Yeah, there was not a lot of support in the parent survey for holding it for the parent. I think maybe like 20% said that they like that, so...
Yeah, kids of school, pick it up.
Well, but then it kind of puts the responsibility back on the parent parenting and telling your child, look, if I have to go pick up your phone because you can't manage to follow rules, then you and I are going to have a problem that takes it out of our hands.
Do you feel like you have a starting point, Dr. Ballinger?
Yeah, yeah, I think we've got some things, and there's probably some legal questions that we check with legal on concerning some of that. Yeah, I think I have a good starting point there.
Okay. Any strong additions? Anybody want to make comments? Ms. Salons, can you read us into a closed session?
This motion is made that this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711. The School Board desires to discuss the following matters in a closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711A1, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, promotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of employees of the School Board, specifically to discuss amending an employee's contract. Is there a second?
Mr. Valentine, can you roll call?
Dr. Vaughn?
Aye.
Ms. Salons?
Aye.
Mr. Rinaldi?
Aye.
Dr. Pence?
Aye.
Ms. Love?
Aye.